Thank you, dear.
Regular monthly meeting, Anderson County Board of Education will come to order. Don, will you lead the pledge?
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I'd like to ask Preston Martin if he will read the resolution for the director of schools.
Thank you. A board resolution honoring and recognizing Anderson County Schools directors. Whereas our directors lead our school system with integrity and honesty. And whereas they provide support for the programs at the schools, helping students to grow and develop academically and socially, and whereas they have guided our schools through some of its most trying times during the coronavirus crisis and push for increased public awareness, cooperation, and community support. And whereas their many years of distinguished public service are hallmark of commitment and dedication to public education and to the children of Anderson County. And whereas they have promoted a school-friendly attitude within our community. Whereas they have worked cooperatively with the Board of Education in the promotion of budgets for our school district to provide the necessary resources for our schools to operate a quality educational program. Therefore, be it resolved that the Anderson County Board of Education hereby declares November 12th, 2020 as Director Appreciation Day in Anderson County. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education officially recognizes the services our directors to the students of Anderson County High School and extends its appreciation for their work to enhance the learning environment of the students in our district. Adopted wholeheartedly and unanimously by the elected school board of Anderson County, Tennessee, and its meaning this 12th day of November, 2020.
Is that the original?
No. Pam, do you know where the original is to where we can?
Sign it.
Dr. Burrow, board. I have been asked by the other directors to present Dr. Parrott with a small token of our appreciation for the wonderful job that he does as our director and as our leader. Utrust, every year they have a different theme for director's appreciation. And this year is Uno, the card game. And all of the directors have signed a card with a little message for you so that when you're playing this game with Rachel, tell her not to get too offended by some of the things that we've said. But anyway, just a small token of our appreciation if you'll come up here and receive your gift, Dr. Parrott.
Thank you, Greg.
Mr. Chairman, do you need a motion for that resolution?
I do.
I'll move, we approve. Wholeheartedly.
Motion made and second, we approve the resolution for the director of schools. Discussion. Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Pam, I didn't understand where the...
I'll get it to you and have you sign it.
Oh, okay, that's fine. We want to make it official. Recognition of guests, Catherine Price.
Good evening. I have the privilege this evening to share some of the hard work that our nurses in our county have delivered over the last couple of months. Our team has always worked hard, of course, to provide care to our students each day. However, this year they were handed additional duties due to COVID-19. And these tasks have been tackled head-on, of course, at the beginning of the year. Our school nurses walked in our doors on July 29th and were handed several boxes of PPE to open a sick and well clinic at their designated school. This added additional clinic for each school in order to have a designated area for symptomatic students to be assessed in. The nurses had to be creative in finding an area and set up a whole new clinic at each school. Who knew a garment rack and a shower curtain would be used as the perfect divider for COVID-19 for a pandemic? We have 15 full-time and five part-time nurses. We have been blessed to receive nurses in each school this year to cover over 540 health concerns, including diabetes, allergies, asthma, seizures, tube feedings, daily medications, and as-needed medications in our schools. Our nurses have seen already over 14,000 office visits since August 10th. Some of our schools have already exceeded the number of office visits seen during the entire 2019 school year. In October, our nurses assisted in administering over 875 flu shots, a special thanks to Hoskins for servicing North Elementary and Walgreens for servicing all other Anderson County schools. We couldn't have provided these flu vaccines without our partners. Also, a new program we officially got off the ground this week is Stellar Therapy Services. We have contracted with Stellar to provide a Medicaid reimbursement program for our school nursing services. Around 20 students that received daily medication or procedures met with a nurse practitioner and a school nurse this week alone to begin the reimbursement program for our system. COVID-19 has been a learning experience for all. The guidance is rapidly changing, and we are constantly learning new recommendations from the CDC and Tennessee Department of Health. We have aided in contact tracing with the Health Department in over 300 reports. When I say reports, that's just reports outside, meaning it could be just learning of somebody's parents that has COVID-19, and we are talking about that they are a household contact. Our current active case number is 19 students and six employees. The motto of Anderson County Schools is "Every Student, Every Day." And our nursing staff has fulfilled this statement throughout these unprecedented times. A few examples of this would be members of our team coming in on the recent flood day to complete contact tracing, working countless hours contact tracing both after school and on the weekends or holidays, meeting parents at school after hours to ensure our students have medication available at school, or staying with sick children after school so their parent can come and pick them up. Our staff ensures that the whole student is being taken care of, from gathering resources for outside school hours to ensuring they have materials or resources to continuing learning if they are quarantined. We are so fortunate to have this nursing team in Anderson County Schools to serve our students and staff. Our focus is the health and safety of our kids so they can be their best self both in and out of the classroom. Thank you. We have also put together a little slideshow here. Can we go one second? I don't know if this sound's going to work or not.
Sound shirt.
Thank you, Gavin.
Happy Gavin.
I really think it would be appropriate for Dr. Parrott to prepare a certificate of appreciation for the nurses for all the hard work they've done during the pandemic and the ongoing pandemic. And we're so proud to have nursing in each school now that it really helps.
Yes, it does. And I think that's the one thing that they've become... You know, we have a lot of schools that only have just a principal and a secretary there. And with COVID, it's been so hard. And the nurses, even though they've done a great job before, there's a lot of times that they would be... The nurse wouldn't be there. Now, we've got one to be on staff full-time. And I think that's probably... That is one of our priorities in next year's budget is to continue that, to have a nurse in every school. Just if we're going to do like what we say for every student every day, then feeding them, making sure they have clothes, making sure they have, you know, a clean place. We also make sure they have a healthy place. So my hat's off to Catherine. She works. I get emails and stuff from her all hours of the night. I don't know how she does it, but she does a great job. She keeps... Mr. Dill, when they talk, Mr. Dill is her assistant.
I'm her secretary.
You're her secretary. She keeps him on his toes. So, great job. And we'll do that next month. We'll work on a resolution. Thank you for that.
I guess we ought to have a motion recommending a resolution.
I'll so move.
I second it. Motion made and second, we prepare a resolution of appreciation for the nursing staff.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should say thanks to Mr. Turnbull from Walgreens for the great donation that they've given to their school.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. If I could just say something too on behalf of Walgreens, you know, it's just a pleasure being able... You know, Anna Hurd and Catherine Price were at my store, making sure we had everything that they needed, that we needed, making sure the bar forms was filled out correctly. I mean, it's just a pleasure from a business standpoint to do business with professional folks, you know, like Catherine and Anna, the school systems. Anything that we needed when we was at the school, we reached out to the principals. She was there all the time, Anna was there. So just seamless, you know, the partnership that we have was just seamless. And everything really worked out good, you know, from the business standpoint of it. You know, we all kind of pulled our resources together. You know, we had to go to several other Walgreens to be able to pull the shots together and everything to make it happen. But, you know, they were there, her and Anna were there with us, you know, anything we needed. Constant feedback, emails. And so, you know, that's just what it's about, communication and the partnership and everything. So it worked well because we all communicated with each other. So on behalf of Walgreens, thank you again. I appreciate, you know, the opportunity to help serve our community. You know, we live here too. And so, you know, we just appreciate the opportunity to, you know, to be able to serve our community and especially our school systems. Because, you know, I got three kids in the school system, my wife. And, you know, our children are our greatest asset, you know, and they're our future. So, anyway, again, thank you very much. Pleasure doing business, you know, with the school system, with Catherine and Anna, and with everybody. So thank you again on behalf of Walgreens. I have to be the servant.
Thank you. Sorry.
Vote on the resolution, the appreciation resolution. Vote for the appreciation.
Oh, we haven't voted on it. Motion made and carried for Declaration of Appreciation for the Nursing Staff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Persons to be heard, I don't think we've got any more. Approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second. Moving second approval of the agenda, discussion. Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second approval of consent agenda, discussion. None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Executive approval, none again this month. Comments from the chair? We have tentatively decided on the joint venture meeting on February the 26th and 27th. State Department has been contacted. And we're waiting to hear back from Pam for confirmation of that. So we ought to...
It is confirmed.
It's confirmed?
Okay. It is confirmed according to Pam. So we're set to meet on February the 27th. I'll ask Dr. Parrott to come up with some time, agenda to look over in December. If there's anything that anybody wants to add to that to go over and discuss at the meeting, we'll try to come up with an agenda by December.
Good. I'll make sure. I'll put something together and we'll look at last year's and I'll send it out to y'all and let you... If you've got something special, you want on the agenda, just go ahead and email it to me or Pam and we'll make sure it's on there.
This is a great time if we've got any problems existing that we need to discuss. Great time to go over it and do it because we sort of have a captive audience without the press. I shouldn't say that. Comments from the student board members?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. School spirit has been high in this past month of October at CHS. The band, cheerleading team, and dance team have continued going to local elementary schools to boost excitement and morale. Seniors have continued to receive acceptance letters from universities and technical schools. I have a special shout-out, in fact, for senior Olivia Barker, who has recently accepted to her dream school, Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University in Daytona Beach, Florida. It's a very prestigious school, and from everyone at Clinton High School, we're very excited for her. CHS students have continued to grow academically as well. The seniors with scores 18 to 20 on the ACT were moved to an ACT preparation class to help them boost their scores and become ready graduates. Over 90% of qualifying seniors have already applied for Tennessee Promise, and 40% of seniors completed their federal student financial aid. 92 parents of sophomores have attended individual family conferences to discuss their students' pre-ACT scores. Several students have also begun community service for their Tennessee Promise Scholarship by getting involved in clubs and programs after school. A scholarship workshop was recently held for parents and students to give them ways to make college more affordable. And in a recent initiative to improve grades, students have been receiving incentive cards for having As and Bs. These cards entitle them to discounts, leaving class early, and more. The hope is that this will motivate students to make better grades so that they can receive these incentives. Thank you.
So a little bit about what's going on at Anderson County High School. So more and more seniors are learning about scholarship opportunities. They're being aided by the Class of 2021 Google Classroom, which is actually ran by the counselors at our school, posting information on upcoming scholarships and deadlines and stuff, helping out the Class of 2021. Dates for end-of-course exams have been set for early December. So students and teachers are excited to show off everything they've learned and their skillsets as they prepare to give and take their exams. We're actually having a drive-in Christmas movie, which is sponsored by the Anderson County SGA on December 10th. And of course, we'll be doing all the COVID precautions and all that. So we got that covered. The SGA is also sponsoring a winter formal on Saturday, January 16th. The theme is Hollywood Red Carpet. And that'll give the juniors last year a chance to, you know, bounce back from not having a prom last year. And also the eighth graders who didn't get to have their eighth grade formal. So they can come to the winter formal. And all four grades are invited to come to that, so that should be fun. The Leo Club is sponsoring Feed a Family, where we're bringing in canned goods and spare change to help out around the community. Lastly, the Anderson County High School football team will play tomorrow night against Greenville at home in round two of the playoffs. And we're excited about our chances this year, and hopefully we can keep moving on. Thank you.
Directors report.
Thank you, Dr. Burrow. Just a few things. First of all, I talked to our principals this morning. You know, we agonized over our reopening plan and gave y'all copies of it and worked on it for so long. And we believe it's really been a great plan. We've not had to make any modifications to our plan. One of the things, I don't know if Catherine said, is that, you know, out of the over 600 students that we've had to put in contact tracing since we started school, and you know, that is if a student's been within six foot of a person for more than 15 minutes, then we have to send them home for 14 days. Out of those 600 students, no students have contacted the coronavirus. And that goes to show the precautions we've put in place are working. We wish that the Health Department would back up and say it's only 10 days instead of 14 days, but they're never going to do that. And we're working with that and we're following all the rules. But I think that one thing we have really saw is that our students are so resilient. They're doing such a great job. I've been in all the schools and they are wearing their masks, their social distancing. They understand that things are different, but they're still kids. They're still going on the playground. They're still having, you know, we're still having football games and basketball games. The, you know, we're not going on any field trips this year. And we may look at that in January. But we started letting some people come into our schools, especially at the high schools with our seniors, with the recruiters coming in, with the colleges coming in, and things like that upward bound. All of those people coming in because, just because it's COVID, we still got to get ready for our seniors to have their scholarships and all that stuff has to be in by December. So they're doing a great job on that. Our... If you saw the report, our attendance is actually going up. We went up about 25 students in the last three weeks. And our number of students that are in class is really going up. We had, before fall break, we had about 1,251 students online, and now we're about 750 online. So our students are going into that. Another thing with that is our student-to-teacher ratio is getting real close in a couple of places, especially at Lake City Elementary School. So we might have to add another teacher there for the rest of the year, which is a good thing. And... But our attendance rate of our students is great. Our attendance rate of our teachers is great. They... They're... One of our principals said, "The only thing is their stress level today is like it was last year at the end of the year," you know. And so we're thankful that in less than a week, we get Thanksgiving off. And 15 days after that is Christmas break. And it is hard to believe we have 20 more school days left and will be half-through this year. And I think that's a testament to every student, every employee we have, that everybody's working together. And I want to thank you all for your commitment. And it goes to show too, it's just like when Catherine talked about, there's a lot of school systems are really struggling because they didn't have the funds to put that extra staff in to have nurses in every school or to have this teacher teaching online when they... In elementary school and all those things. And that has really helped us that we can still have school. Instead of just managing school, we're having school. And I think that's a testament to this board because being physically conservative, we had funds that we could pull that out and could do that. And it's going to really pay the benefits over the next year or two. And so that's just a great thing. So... And I... Thanks for the resolution. We all have a job to do, and we've got a great team that does it. So, thank you. That's all I have, Dr. Burrow.
Committee reports. Budget committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Budget Committee actually met twice this... In the last month. We met once to consider a request by county commission, but no action was taken on that request. So there's nothing to approve there. Then we met Monday to do our regular budget stuff. So we have the appropriations short tonight, short and sweet. Appropriation 1A is $167,200, which is vocational rehabilitation grant. The 1B is the Utrust grant that goes to the Head Start of $200. So those appropriations have been approved by the committee and recommended to the full board for approval. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made and second, approval of the appropriations, 1A, 1B. Roll call vote.
Mr. Bale?
Aye.
Mr. Gillan Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Langenberg?
Aye.
Mr. McCamey?
Aye.
Ms. Portwood?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Burrow?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have three transfers. The first, 2A, is for $100,000. It was just transferring money from software. It was put in an equipment budget, needs to be moved to the software line item. 2B and C both involve Head Start. 2B is transferring $10,445 to social workers and medical personnel that went into a teaching assistant line item or something. So we're just moving that money to the correct code. 2C is $9,564.74, which is transferring money for staff development, travel, and food and things, just to all go into virtual training because everything's online now. So those are the appropriations. They have been approved by the Budget Committee and forwarded to the full board. And I so move.
Moving second, approval of transfers, 2A, 2B, 2C. Discussion. None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
We also approved a pay scale change for classified directors. Basically puts everybody in central office at the same... Not the same pay, but at least on the same process and the same... Same playing field. So that... I won't read that letter, but that has been approved by the Budget Committee and forwarded to the full board, and I so move.
Moving second, we approve the change of the pay scale for classified directors. Discussion. If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
The next item was the family health insurance adjustment. We're agreeing to pay a little more for family health care. We've got employees who are... It's costing about half of what they make to pay for their family insurance. So hopefully this will be able to help some folks out. So that was approved by the Budget Committee and sent to the full board for approval. And I so move.
Second.
Moving second, we approve the change in the pay scale for classified... No, I'm sorry. Adjustment in family health insurance. adjustment in family health insurance. Discussion. None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
And the last item, Mr. Chairman, was to approve a step increase for employees at the twenty-eight years of service mark, and that was approved by the budget committee and sent to the full board, and I so move.
Second. This is for...
Classified.
Classified.
I mean, yeah. Classified, yes.
Motion made and seconded, approve a step raise for classified employees for twenty-eight years or more service. None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
That is all from budget.
I would like to say, before we get off the budget, that in our special call meeting, you know, we would have loved to have met the county commission's requests for the raise, but we did not think it was financially feasible at this time to do it in lieu of all the uncertainty that's facing us with the virus and everything else in the forthcoming year or so. We looked at it hard and lean, but we thought it was better to leave well enough alone. Policy commission, committee.
Policy committee met Monday night, and we had two policies that we took action on. The first one is the sick leave 5.302. And the change in that was it was deleting something that was already in the FMLA policy, it's highlighted in red, and we did not need it duplicated, so the committee recommended approval on first reading, and I so move.
Second.
Move and second, approval of the sick leave change, change in the sick leave policy, 5.302. Discussion. If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
We had one other policy, that was the code of conduct. Actually, changed the title of it a little bit, but it's the same number, 6.300, and you can see in the front part, that one through five, they had inserted the standards in there, and we adopted those, and they asked us to identify our discipline practices, that's highlighted in the yellow, and we added up a few more little disciplinary causes, and that's pretty much it. Those are the changes I liked in yellow, and the committee recommended approval on first reading, and I so move.
Second.
Move and approve changes on code of conduct on first reading, policy number 6.300. Discussion. If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Now, all you have in front of you is a paper copy of the Knox Candy Board of Education Interrogations and Searches. We had hours up for discussion, but we decided to put it off till we got further information, and Dr. Parrick has submitted this one for us to consider, and I want y'all to have a copy so we can be ready to discuss it at our December policy committee meeting.
Thank you.
No action would be taken.
No action.
We'll refer to the next policy committee meeting.
That's all.
Anything else?
Action items.
Tenure.
Tenure.
Dr. Burrow, all of these teachers have met all qualifications for tenure under the state rules and regulations, and I submit them to you all tonight for approval for tenure.
Move and approve.
Aye.
Move and second, we approve the tenure list for teachers. None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Anything else to come before the board? If not, we are adjourned.
Hey, Tim?
Yes.
I want to tell you about a conversation I had yesterday.
No, who wants to do that?